All right. Good evening. Welcome. This is the Tuesday, February 26, 2019 Board Meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 for the items listed, reasons listed on the agenda. We have six Board members present. Mr. Bloom is absent, and at this time we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have no one signed up. Are there any other public comments? Right. With that, we will move on to approval of Board Meeting Minutes. Approval of January 22, 2019, and February 12, 2019 Minutes. Are there any changes? Then those stand as presented. And approval of January 22, 2019, and February 12, 2019, closed session minutes. And those stand as presented as well. Next, we have the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to pull? Okay.
I'd like to pull Items D and E from the consent agenda.
Anything else? Okay. So then I need a motion for Items A, B, C, F, G, H, I.
I move that we approve Superintendent's Consent Agenda, Items A, B, C, F, F, G, H.
I second.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes. Now I need a motion for Item D, and then we'll have discussion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract with White &amp; Company for architect services related to planning and conceptual design of future projects.
I second.
Okay. Discussion?
Margaret? Yeah. For, this applies to both of these items. I'm wondering if we can just give some background on these particular items, D and E, and explain what they are, and just the rationale on where this, why we are approving this again.
So, back in June of 2017, the Board approved the agreement with White for architect services. At that time, we had put together a survey of architect fees of all comparable, or of lots and lots of other school districts and what we pay architects. In addition to that, White had been, has been our architect for many years, and had served the district well over the years with past construction projects. And so, at that time, the Board approved the financial elements with White. And hindsight 2020, at that time, at June of 17, I would have put in the Board, the recommendation, you know, that the administration work out the contracts with the lawyers and have the Board approve that. We didn't have that in the recommendation at the time. The lawyers have worked through the contract language, and that's what's presented tonight is just the contract language around what was already agreed upon back when the Board approved this in June of 17. As far as ICI is concerned, in Item E, we had a big process with an RFP and the Finance Committee and Chris Bloom. We interviewed, we had a, I can't remember exactly how many different contractors proposed on RFP that we narrowed it, and then we had interviews, and we selected ICI. And again, this is the same thing where the attorneys from, our attorneys worked out the contract language. And so, that's what this is today, is the, just, the financial elements were approved back in June of 17. This is the contract language being approved tonight.
Thank you. Jim?
Actually, Chris, I think you were prudent not to spend a bunch of legal fees to negotiate a contract before we knew if we had a referendum that passed and that we were actually going to have to engage these individuals.
I wrote an email, and I think I referred to an RFP. There was not an RFP. There was a survey of other architectural firms and fees, together with a proposal by White. And that proposal was approved in June of 2017. These contracts fall within the parameters of that proposal, including scope and fee, right? Great. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes.
All right. A motion for Item E.
Here, I'll make that motion. Let the Board of Education approve the contract with ICI International Contractor for Construction Management and Estimating Services.
Discussion? John?
Chris, again, there was an RFP that was approved, selected and approved June 2017. This contract falls within both scope and price of that approved proposal by ICI, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. Motion passes.
Okay. Superintendent's Agenda Action Items. Approval of Student Services Staffing Recommendation.
The recommendation that you have in front of you is to add a Director of Special Education, EC5, a Director of Special Education, 612, an Assistant Director of Special Education at York High School, and an Assistant Director of Student Services. That would be in large part offset by eliminating the four special education supervisor positions and the .6 LEA rep at North, or, excuse me, at York. And what the responsibilities that are currently covered in the current configuration would be adjusted, and this isn't in specific detail, but in terms of generally, the purpose of this is to try to push the primary responsibility for student growth, parent relationships, communication to the building level, and increase ownership responsibility and accountability with the people at the building level that allows them to be more in tune with the inner workings of the school improvement plans of the building, the classroom instruction, familiarity with the teachers, the parents, the families. So what we would want to do is have the routine IEP responsibilities managed by the buildings with the other associated learning implications, and the District Office perform support functions like compliance, legal issues, extended school year grants, the consistency of programming across the district, and those types of support functions, and also deal with some of the more complex students that have severe handicaps, outplacement of students that are not able to, their needs are not able to be met in the district. So the addition of the .5 Dean at the middle school is similar in philosophy to what we did with the .5 Elementary Assistant Principals. It wouldn't work exactly the same. They would take on more of the student behavior management and building operation issues so that the IEP functions would be handled by the principal and/or the assistant principal would free up their time to deal with that, as well as get in classrooms more and deal with the professional learning and those functions. The general concept would be that each building would have a point person for special ed. So instead of the district special education people having their departmental meetings with the current structure that they have, the department meetings would include a building representative so that there would be a direct line of communication to the buildings as well. The job descriptions of the new positions are included in there. The Dean job descriptions are being reviewed by the middle school principals, but would likely look similar to the high school. Responsibilities, with the exception that they would not have as many after-hours events. Also, the Deans were envisioning that they would be, the .5 position, it would be on the teaching contract. It wouldn't be an administrative position. They would teach .5 in the building where they're assigned. So that's the proposal.
Is there a motion? Then we can discuss.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Student Services Staffing Recommendation as presented.
All right. Discussion?
From a bigger picture standpoint, Dave, I mean, the things are, you know, we've had this structure in place for quite a while. So can you highlight, I mean, I know you talked about the job descriptions and kind of bigger picture what we're doing, but what are the impacts to our programs and students and our staff, the parents?
Well, right now, the supervisors do do a lot of things, but largely are responsible for several buildings. So one supervisor at the elementary level has four buildings, the other supervisor has the other four. And then the middle school person has three. The high school position is a little bit different because that person is actually housed in that building, which makes, which has made that a little bit easier for them. And so, they're, they have their district-level meetings, and then they're, for the most part, in a different building every day with their meeting schedule. And so, they don't have the opportunity to participate in the late arrival work. They don't have the, they're not in classrooms as much, not that they don't go into classrooms, but they're not in classrooms as much. They don't perform those types of functions that the building administration does in the same way. And so, I think that in terms of being able to support teachers, or being able to be ingrained in the culture of the school, communicate with the teachers and the parents, it's just, it's a difficult, it's a difficult structure from that standpoint. They have some technical expertise that is valuable, and what we're looking at doing with some of the positions that we're hiring at the elementary level, for example, is we're scrutinizing their background to try to make sure that people have the expertise that we need, or the aptitude to get the training and learn and be able to perform some of the functions that are currently being performed by other people. So we know that we would have to be very deliberate about making sure that there's consistency in the way we write IEPs, and that there's consistency in the programming in the different buildings. So we would, we would have to organize our work to ensure some of those things. As you know from the special ed report that was just delivered, one of the things that we have to make a commitment to work on is the IEP process. So the people responsible for that would be involved in our collective effort to improve in that area. And, I mean, those are some of the things. I mean, I don't know if that addresses all of the different types of concerns that you might have about, you know, what would look different?
Yeah. I'm just trying to get a sense of, I mean, we've had a structure in place for quite a while. You know, with this change, you know, what's, what changes for the students, the parents, the process? I guess, you know, maybe at some point, you know, are we going to come back and be looking at, you know, here are the outcomes, here are the improved outcomes that we have been able to achieve based on this organizational structure addressed X, Y, Z issues that we heard about at the last meeting. And so, some of those linkages would be extremely helpful for us to be able to articulate.
Well, I think the big thing that we're looking to do is have the buildings own the program so that all students belong to everybody, and there's not the, I don't know if I want to, you know, when, when something goes awry, it's, it's easy to find all kinds of reasons other than, you know, sometimes taking, you know, the reins. And I think that when we have gaps that have persisted with our achievement, that the best way to affect that is to have the educators in the building where the students are taking the ownership for the learning of those students. And I think that this helps improve that, improve in that area.
And that makes sense. You know, I just, I guess, the more that I listen to the question that I asked and kind of the, what my thought was is, I would actually like to hear that moving forward because that then provides the linkages to what we're doing from board meeting to board meeting, to why the effort of reviewing this program district-wide. Of course, one piece is ensuring that the issues are addressed where the issues exist with the teams that they exist with. So that's internal. The other thing is that it's, it's also external with, you know, we heard feedback from students and parents. So how does this structure, how are we going to, I'm going to call it monitor progress and see what improvements have been made and what have we been able to see as improved outcomes, improved process?
I think that we do need to improve our district-wide MTSS functioning, and I think that the principals at the last principal meeting clearly identified that progress monitoring was, was an area that we have to try to address as quickly as we possibly can. I do think that if we only tried to change the structure and didn't fix anything else, that it wouldn't work. But I think that this particular configuration will allow what we're trying to do to work more effectively and more quickly.
My other question is, does this impact the Transition Center? And if so, how?
Currently, no. The Transition Center actually, I had some recent discussions with the high school principal, and of course, we're looking at some of the facility pieces, but we're also, the Transition Center programming is so unique, those students have such a diverse range of needs in that same building, that that is something that's going to take, that, what needs to happen there, whether it's, it's whatever it is at that building, to try to impact the experiences in a positive way for the students, those are things that are going to have to be looked at more in the context of the Transition Center and not related to this. I mean, I think, you know, and Kathy, if you want to speak to this, certainly feel free, but the Transition Center is a high school program. So between the high school administrators and the director of 612, that would be where the work would have to happen to.
Thank you, Dave. Currently, between Mr. Mixon, the high school supervisor, and Mrs. Mueller, the high school department chairperson, and myself, we are largely responsible. Not that Mrs. Deluga and the rest of her team aren't supportive, but in terms of the programming and some of the specifics and the technical knowledge that is specific to transition planning and programming, looking at where we want to go for next year with some things, or how we expand those community supports, or how we're connecting with those students that are the small number that we have receiving transition services outside of the district are still connected with our vocational coordinator. So it does take the knowledge, and I'm not dismissing the knowledge of our building-level administrators, but that's the area that folks like a supervisor or department chairperson or myself would be bringing to the equation. The staff is still a part of the York High School staff, a part of that professional learning, and when we're talking about district vision and district leadership, that's what we're doing. As far as the differentiation of the professional learning, that usually comes from myself, Mr. Mixon, and Mrs. Mueller. For example, at the last institute day, they started with Dr. Moyer in the auditorium, like all of us, but then we had coordinated with some other districts to do some very specific professional learning and collaboration for a couple of hours before they came back and then worked on their own plans applying that. Because many of the activities that were at York were not necessarily specific to their job role. So that is, I think, to Dr. Moyer's point of there is a uniqueness to that, much like we see at the preschool. Our preschool teachers do a lot of the same things as our elementary teachers, but then there's things that Mrs. Conrad brings to the table with them specifically. One of the things that you'll be seeing with the upcoming staffing that Mr. Mixon and I started working on last summer is expanding our services. There's a group of students, a population, I should say, not identified by name, but by profile, that we want to expand our transition services to. And we were invited along with some other districts last summer to the College of DuPage, the community college, to look at what they were doing that they opened up in January. Our target group is our graduates this May. Our transition staff is finishing the proposal. It would take a 1.0 position, and these would be all students that are attending College of DuPage courses. But they would tend to profile of students who have like executive functioning, mental health, anxiety, school avoidance, to put it in layman's terms of they need help learning how to do college and navigating the complexities of that system. When they entered high school or as they were in high school, that support was there. That support is at the college. There's a lot of support for students. The difference is the level of advocacy it takes for those students to access that. So we're finding that there are students that need that beyond just the York, the York walls. And so, we're looking at, once the position is approved, that we would start soliciting students. They would have to defer their diploma. It's just like our students that end up attending the Transition Center. They participate in all the graduation and all those activities, but they do not accept their diploma, so we can still enroll them. So a student would be duly enrolled to receive our services, but all of that, the staff member that we're talking about would be housed at the College of DuPage. They've created a space, not just specific to District 205, but area districts, and it's up to us to navigate with the students those things and talk them through on-site planning and so forth. And then we'd look at very specific entrance and exit criteria. The student would be setting his or her own goals, and then once they would exit, they would then receive their diploma and no longer be duly enrolled. And that could vary by the student as to how long that would take.
Anybody else? Is that, that's not on the proposal for tonight? Okay.
No, that was, I think, in response to Karen's inquiry as to the Transition Center.
Okay.
And I give the gentleman, it just happens to be gentleman right now that are all staff, that they operate in both our worlds very well. Advocate when we need to differentiate some things and also see themselves as a part of the York staff in pushing forward the mission and vision of our district.
So with the new positions for the EC5, is it called Director? So that's several buildings, too. So the person would have to move across many buildings similar to today, but the difference is what exactly?
Well, the difference is that they would support the buildings correct. They would be housed at the District Office. They would be doing, they would not be doing things in the same way that the current supervisors do, and that the current supervisors are in the building doing a lot of building-level IEPs and building meetings. And those would be handled at the buildings where, and then the District Office functions would, would look a little bit different. So if you want to give a little bit deeper example of, examples of what that kind of would look like?
Currently, our supervisors take primary responsibility for all of the IEP meetings in the elementary schools. And being that we have a model where our principals are the only administrator in the building, they're, they're doing a lot as well. David mentioned before, ownership for student learning and those sorts of things. Let me be clear in that our principals are very vocal about wanting more time to focus on student learning for all students. It's not a matter of intent or passion. It's a matter of how do we make that work with the time? And one of the things with the function of being in, for example, each of the elementary supervisors is, has a dedicated day in each building. They also each manage an outplacement load of 12 to 14 kids. The high school outplacement load is, is higher than that. And then, they are here at District Office a couple of hours on a Monday afternoon. We choose Mondays because that way, when there is no school on Monday, and there's a lot of Mondays throughout the school year where we don't have school, that we miss the district day and not one of the building days. That keeps the supervisors very much, a lot of time in those IEP meetings. Those are valuable. Those are important, and sometimes the principals are able to participate in those. We're looking to move more of that participation because that is where you're talking with your teachers, you're talking about service delivery. And then the supervisor role would move to those director- And then the supervisor role would move to those director positions, which would give a broader perspective. We would remove the outplacement piece to the two directors, again, to allow more time. And it would allow those principals to have more capacity and a relationship with the person who's spending an increased amount of time in their building. And special education is one aspect of it. Looking back at the report that you, that we did, thank you to Mary Ann for going in the depth of the multi-tiered system of support. Right now, the supervisors are a small part of it. Time is a function that just doesn't allow them to be very involved in that. And all of our teachers, as well as our administrators, acknowledge that that's an area we need to develop in working with learning and teaching. That's not specific to special education, that's a general education function as well. And an assistant principal, whether at the middle school or high school, would allow that to be in the building focusing on that.
I just wanted to, this is kind of for you, Kathy. So first, you know, thank you to the administration for taking the feedback from the review that Mary Ann did and coming up with a structure that should hopefully better serve, you know, our students, and which is what we want to do. And, you know, I think one of the things that came out was communication and processes seemed to be where you heard that everybody felt that you wanted more communication and better processes. And in particular, that students, that parents in particular, but I think everyone feels this way, that the students are known, and when you know a student, you can better address their needs. And do you feel that this structure would better support students and that they will be known and the people that really interact with them on a daily basis will be able to help in their education in a more, I don't know, intimate way?
I would agree with that statement, yes. One of the things, and again, looking at the function of time, the students, I have to give credit to our supervisors on the amount of hours and things that, I know what they're doing outside the day because we're online while doing those things at night. All those other things take place at night. They evaluate staff and some of those other things that they provide leadership for. If you're in a room with IEP meetings, three or four a day, that's limiting the eight to three when the students are present. And they're very in tune with a lot of things. I think going back to the ownership, the passion and the commitment from our principals is there. They would like to see, they recognize that the position doesn't allow that function to occur. So if you're thinking about the amount of time that a principal has available with just one of them in a building to get into the classroom, that increases if they have someone there even the couple of days a week. And they would be assuming more responsibility for the IEP meetings, but they could link it to the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support, and what they're seeing in the classroom. And those evaluated responsibilities would move back to the building for those specific positions which the supervisors have been evaluating.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion passes. Next on the agenda is approval of board member conference expenses.
So this is required by the law that was passed about a year ago or two years ago. And it just requires that when there is travel involved for a board member, that it's approved on an agenda in this manner.
I move that the Board of Education approve the travel expenses for board member Jim Collins to attend the AASA Innovation and Transformational Leadership Network Conference in the amount of $656.80.
Discussion? All right. Any discussion? All right, go ahead.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
Mr. McDonough?
Yeah, sure.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Five yeses, no nays, one present, one absent, motion passes. Okay. Next item is approval of AT&amp;T Internet Service Agreement.
So I'm going to let Dave give the rationale for this, but it's essentially to allow us to get more bandwidth and improve our efficiency.
Yes, this would double our bandwidth for the district, which, you know, as you can imagine, is growing, our use is growing constantly. The other thing it does is it provides more reliability because we'd have a second internet link over which the traffic would travel, so that if one link goes down, we still have a link up. And actually, this would have helped us during this school year. We had an outage earlier from AT&amp;T that actually affected instruction for a good part of a day. So this would give us double the bandwidth, it would give us some reliability. And the reason why the recommendation also includes an extension of our existing service for six months is just so we can have a seamless transition, bring up a new link, do some testing, make sure everything's working fine, and take the old link down.
I.
I move that the Board of Education approve entering into a three-year agreement with AT&amp;T for two GBPS internet service at the District Administration Center for $2,255 per month plus tax and fees. Authorized superintendent or designated to sign the associated AT&amp;T Internet Service Pricing Schedule. Three authorized superintendents designated to execute AT&amp;T E-rate rider with option A selected to commence services even if E-rate funding has not been committed by a universal service administrative company. And four authorized superintendents or designated to assign the AT&amp;T Internet Service Pricing Schedule and Illinois Century Network Service Order to extend the existing 100 MBPS internet service through December 31, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent, motion passes.
All right, next is approval of donations.
So we have several on here. The first link in school, total amount $11,500, $1,500 to partner with a local business and kick off a kindness campaign at the school. The second is $5,000 towards the bookroom allocation. Previous donations from previous schools, PTAs have gone toward bookrooms. And when this was suggested to us, we had Nikki Tamaru, the director of literacy, check out Lincoln's bookroom. And the Lincoln PTA had not allocated resources toward that bookroom, and we found out that it was, as compared to the other elementary schools in our district, did not have as many of the personalized level reading resources. And so we thought that that was a legitimate recommendation. And then the $5,000, the other remaining $5,000 is for STEM resources for their makerspace. And we had Dave Beatty check into this and make sure that we were going to be able to handle any special considerations related to maintaining the equipment with tech-related concerns, and we were able to satisfy those. Jackson, as you know, this is not a new, this is an annual donation in memory of a former Jackson student, the Aidan Shea Foundation. And this year's gift is $1,724.40 to go toward a subscription to Brain Pop. And then Sandberg Middle School is a donation in the amount of $1,263.99. They want to, it's, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, it's what's written in your packet, it's just to help with the equipment for their office announcements. Field Elementary School, the first $2,000, indoor stencil sensory path. Those allow students, when you are indoors, to have various different types of physical activities for, if they need to be indoor for recess or lunch or things like that. And then the other donation is a Gaga pit in the amount of $3,500. Lincoln and Jackson have both allocated funds toward that, so that is something that is very popular with the elementary school children. York High School, they received a grant from the Technology and Manufacturing Association. We have been partnering with them for our manufacturing council. And that award is $27,585 to go towards the purchase of a CNC machine for the new manufacturing lab. And the recommendation would be that the Board of Education approve these donations.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of donations from Lincoln School PTA in the amount of $11,500 for a kindness campaign speaker, a bookroom allocation, and for STEM resources. The Aidan Shea Foundation for $1,724 for a year-long subscription to Brain Pop for Jackson School. The Sandberg Middle School PTA for $1,236.99 for a monitor and supporting technology components. The Field School PTA for $5,500 for an indoor stencil sensory path and Gaga ball pit. And the Technology and Manufacturing Association Foundation for $27,585 for the purchase of a CNC mini-mill. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just want to say thanks to the Lincoln PTA. They are perennially generous, and thank them for this donation.
I'll just say thank you to the Field and Sandberg PTAs for their generosity to the students in those schools. And a special thank you to the Aidan Shea Foundation that generously gives in honor of a student that's no longer at Jackson in his memory. So thank you for that.
And thanks to the Technology and Manufacturing Association Foundation for partnering with York's efforts to make education change as our world and our economy changes. These are, it's a great partnership between community and our school district.
Any other discussion?
I had a quick question for the York donation. Were we expecting that, and that would be less money the district's paying out, or how did that work with the amount of money we're expecting to spend this summer?
Yes, we, when we began the planning for this program, the, we needed to establish a manufacturing council, and we've done that. And once you have the manufacturing council in place, that's when the TMA organization believes it's appropriate, the timing is appropriate to step forward and come through and help support the program. So there will be an ongoing partnership, but we did anticipate that the majority of the equipment in that room, the physical space, was part of our district expenditures. But we anticipated through Perkins Grants and the foundation and the TMA, that the majority of our equipment would come through outside resources. And Mark, if you would like to add to that at all, please feel free.
The initial expenditure of $120,000 or thereabouts was for three mills, manual mills, and three manual lathe. And those, the RFP was done, you voted on that recently, those are being, those have been delivered. And those will finally be installed this summer in the room that Ken Ross is currently teaching in, where the manufacturing lab is going. The plan was down the line to, by some way or another, either through Perkins or CTE Grants, to get some of these CNC mills in place, two of them. This actually accelerates the installation of the mill for us. This is a tremendous gift to the district. So we did not count on this. We were optimistic that this would be a part of, but it is not a part of any of the donations that we've had to date.
Anybody else?
So I just wanted to give background, explanation on how I'm going to be voting on donations for the rest of the school year. So my vote is going to be present on all these donations, these current donations and all donations for the remainder of the school year. Now, I say that while I recognize, I respect, and I appreciate the fundraising of individual school PTAs. Elmhurst 205 is a unit school district. And as a unit school district, we need a collaborative process that advances the district as a whole. And note, I said processes. These processes, so I'm not speaking singularly about a board policy, I'm not speaking about administrative procedures, nor am I talking about just PTA guidelines. It's all of these pieces that have to come together that will affect the desired outcomes that the community has asked for. Now, the desire to have this donation process, it's not a new request. There's been discussions at board meetings previously, there's been discussions with administration, both at the district and the school level, there's been discussions with PTA groups, and even one-off discussions with the community members. Yet, these one-off discussions have not been able to get us where we have asked, where the community is asking us to go. We have not achieved a unifying process that is understood and implemented. So my vote of presence, a present, symbolizes a call. It's a call for community discussion on what and how donations are going to be determined and accepted. As in all actions, I am a singular board member. I have no authority to propose an action, yet I am calling for it. I'm asking that we have a discussion perhaps later during board communication to talk about what this might look like and determine if we can or cannot proceed. Again, this is not a new initiative. It's been discussed many times, positive intent by everyone, but singular discussions are not going to get us where the community, the community has said they want to go. I'm calling for unification of these discussions. So that would include board members, that would include administration, that would include PTA presidents, perhaps the PTA council could do something to help us with that. That would also include the foundation, who also does donation. Asking the group, a singular board member, to come together, I'm asking them to come together to figure out a process that would make these donations work.
Okay, anybody else?
Margaret, how should we take that next step? Just, Margaret, how should we take that next step?
So, thanks, John. So this is what I am thinking. I don't know if we want to discuss it now or if we want to just discuss this in board communications. I would think that there would be a couple of steps that need to be done. One, trying to plan a meeting where all these groups can come together. But before all those groups come together, I know there's a lot of work, a lot of individual homework that needs to be done. So as an example, speaking for the board, some homework that we might want to do before we come to a meeting is to examine our gifts to, gifts to the school district policy, compare that to what the press has, and also compare it to, are there other unit school districts and what their policies are and how they manage these donations? I'm thinking that's some of the homework that the board might want to do before we come together. For the administration, I'm not sure what they might want to do. And administration know best on that, but some of the things that I was thinking about, cost to implement these donations, what's the cost to maintain, what does it mean to have equity in schools? I think that's discussion, the administration, both on the district and the individual school levels. Those are some ideas that they might want to come together for the PTAs, the individual PTAs. They might want to figure out what their individual school community truly wants and how best to manage that in a unit school district. I think it would be helpful for those PTA presidents and board members to have that discussion. So when they come to this joint meeting that I am suggesting, I can only make a suggestion, this joint meeting that they would be prepared to talk about it, and as well as the Foundation, understanding from the Foundation's perspective what the Foundation mission is and how best to manage that in a unit school district. Those to be are some of those next steps that we might want to think about before we get together in a meeting.
Okay, anything else?
I just want to say I totally support that discussion moving forward and would like to see that happen before the end of the year, over the summer. Yes. I mean, would like to see it happen as well.
And again, I don't mean to take, I want us to close this session out, but I understand that this is probably not going to be a one-meeting type of event, but we have to get started. We have to get started. And that, again, is what my vote of present is trying to get us started on having a uniform discussion in our community on how to handle this.
Okay, anything else? All right, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Present.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five yeses, no nays, one present, one absent, motion passes. Next on the agenda is superintendent's communication, boundaries update.
Thank you. So, the boundaries, we have had a meeting with Chris Welton, and I was there, Todd Schmidt was there, and did we have anybody from the architects there? I don't think so. Bev was there and Shannon was there. Shannon was the board rep. And we have a Realtor, a local Realtor, who volunteered to be on this committee, could not make that meeting, but I had a follow-up conversation with her yesterday to bring her up to speed and get her thoughts. And particularly, I think she'll be very helpful moving forward with any type of community outreach and understanding some of the ways where we could be effective, making sure that people understand what they can expect. But we, this is the implementation of the Option D Modified, is what we called it. And it is the area south of Butterfield Road. And it is kind of a right triangle, and it goes to Harrison, Harrison Street. And then the area that is east of York Avenue and that currently goes to Hawthorne, that, those are the two areas affected. So what the proposal, the initial proposal was, just as a refresher, was that the students south of Butterfield in that neighborhood I just described, who are currently bused to Jackson, would be bused to Edison. The people east of York would be in the Edison attendance area, but between York and Kenmore, they would have the choice of either going to Hawthorne or Edison. So, nothing's changed there, but that's what we landed on. What we tried to do at that meeting was try to figure out what the, what we thought the most logical date would be for this to go into effect. And we took into account a couple of things. The two main factors were the construction projects at Lincoln and Field, where we have to house students at Edison during that year of construction. And then the second factor was coordinated with the work of the Early Implementation Subcommittee from the All-Day Kindergarten Committee to try to make sure that we're taking a lot of these things into account in all of our overall planning process for the entire project. And what we were trying to figure out is what's the easiest way to get Edison to maximum capacity as soon as possible without compromising the construction project? And what we, what we thought was that, of course, the earlier we set the date, the earlier Edison fills up, but because the board had chosen not to get into a grandfathering type of situation, but to go by the purchase date of the home, it's a little bit more difficult for us to predict how quickly that will actually kick in over time. And so, the date that we thought made the most sense was June 1st, 2022. So anybody who purchased a home on or after June 1, 2022 would be subject to the new boundary provisions. Anybody that purchases a home up until that date would be able to go to the school that they thought they were going to go to when they bought the home or have the choice of going to Edison. The middle school provisions are that, the only ones that are affected are the ones that I described, the families south of Butterfield. And the agreement was that we would give them the choice to go to either Sandberg or Bryan, because Edison feeds into Sandberg, but there may be people, because of proximity, that would rather have that choice of going to Bryan. So that's, that is built in there. And the goal would be that we can put this on the agenda on March 18th for a board vote. And so I wanted to bring it up in the superintendent's communication tonight so that if there was discussion that people wanted to have around that date or anything else that I described here, that we could make sure that we're attentive to that. And Shannon, I don't know if you would like to add anything?
I'll add one thing. So, in the year 2021, 2022, Edison is full because all the Lincoln kids will be at Edison during that year. So we didn't want to have a situation where Edison could be at overcapacity. So I wanted to wait till the Lincoln construction was done.
Can I follow on with kind of a question in regard to that? So then, are you thinking it's, Edison will be okay when Field has to be there? And if so, why?
The answer to that question is yes, because we think that the, by the time it kicks in, it's going to be so gradual that the amount of students that are going to Edison during that year of Field will likely not be a large number. Field has less students than Lincoln, so we think that we have a little buffer in there to be able to accommodate the Field construction and still try to get Edison filled up sooner rather than later.
All right, I got another one. Okay, so then you're working on, or your, the kindergarten committee is talking about early implementation potentially. So, are, how are you trying to calculate, you know, so you don't end up with Edison totally overcapacity?
Well, that's Mary's problem. But no, we don't, for one thing, we don't, we don't know how possible early implementation's going to be. And if it's possible, we don't know if it's going to be possible for all families that want it. You know, so if we, if we try to come up with an early implementation model, it is possible that for a couple of years, we might have to have some type of lottery system involved or something like that if we don't have the capacity for everybody. But because, because, you know, when you combine the schools, you're not automatically adding, just adding the equivalent number of sections together. Because when you balance the class sizes, it may not be a one-for-one calculation. So, you know, we just, we just took a look at the enrollment projections that Chris had and felt that we were safe picking the June 1st, 2022 date and being able, you know, to accommodate the implementation with the, with the all-day kindergarten. If we go to early implementation, that's why that committee, it's important that that committee knew those dates, because that's going to go into their planning and any ultimate recommendation that comes out of that. So it could be that there's enough space for people overall, but maybe not at their home school for a year or two or different things like that, where if they agree to transport their child somewhere else, you know, they can get it. So, I don't know, Mary, your committee had a follow-up meeting, but I don't know if you want to comment too much until we come back after the 4th, but...
Yes, so our early implementation committee has met three times, and we meet as a whole large group with tuition and curriculum and early implementation next week. So I would be cautious in sharing a lot, but we've looked at a variety of scenarios and really looking at the construction timeline that Chris has provided us with to look at where we might be able to do partial implementation, when schools would be able to do full implementation. So there's several different possibilities that we want to bring forward to the big, the big all-day kindergarten committee.
Karen?
So I'm wondering about the timing of you asking us for this boundary approval with not knowing what really is going on with all-day kindergarten.
Well, because, actually because one drives the other.
Sure, it will drive the possibilities for early implementation. That goes first. And then we can look at the different scenarios that are available.
Early implementation's really only one consideration, because, you know, one of the primary goals of this in the first place was to free up space at Jackson. And so, so the longer this takes to actually, you know, kick in, the longer potentially we have space concerns at Jackson. So, so we were trying to find that sweet spot, and, and we thought that that was the best date we could land on that didn't compromise the Field construction. Well, Lincoln and Field, actually, both. Because, yeah, Lincoln, there would be no space, for sure, because it'll be, it'll be full. Field, we think that the second round, we think there's a little more give that we can, that we can be comfortable with the date that we picked.
Okay, I mean, that's what I was looking at, is all the moving pieces. Yeah. So, because, because Jackson is, has music on the stage currently, and so you're looking at doing some work at Jackson, but that's just the entryway.
Well, that, so there are no designs for that. And so, the, I think that it's going to be very possible that when we redesign that entryway, we're going to be able to figure out a way to get some more space in that building for practical, you know, classroom usage in some capacity. But, but you're right, there are a lot of moving pieces, and that's, you know, that's, we want, we want to be able to establish the boundaries so that we can clearly communicate to the community and make sure that people have ample time to understand. But we also, you know, we picked the, the boundary consideration that we did to try to be as generous to our current families and as least disruptive as possible. So, we didn't move that entire neighborhood at once. If we had done that, we wouldn't have the Jackson problem. So, every decision was a trade-off in some way.
Any, any other questions?
I do, actually. When this comes back to us for March 18th approval, it was clear except for the second to the last paragraph. Let's be consistent, it's York Street, not York Road, York Avenue, whatever, so that, you know, it's various different, I mean, and that's a technicality, but I think that we really need to be clear. And then the second to the last paragraph is not clear. You know, for people that don't know the area, it's not going, it's not as clear as it is up front, and it's not as clear as we typically talk about it. And so I would, I would ask that that paragraph really be tightened up.
So I put that in there, yeah. It's not as clear. I wanted to have the specificity so that there was no question as to what we were actually saying. So I think I have a crackerjack communications person across the room from me who can massage that on my behalf.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then, facilities update?
Okay, so we had a follow-up meeting with our core team, architects, construction managers, and district administration. And we think that we're getting closer to being able to make some information public. And if things move along as, as we hope, we're hoping to have a system of sharing information with the board in April and getting to where we have the opportunity to have some community meetings in May. So, I can't commit with 100% certainty to that, because there are some things that could happen that could derail that, but we're fairly confident at this point that people are going to be starting to see some of the tangible work that's been going on behind the scenes soon. But for now, we're continuing all the planning and the pre-design work. And so you see the all-day kindergarten committee meetings coming up, the finance committee's coming up. The architects will meet with each of the principals prior to meeting with their school teams. And then we've got another core team meeting in March. Now, keep in mind, Todd meets every Tuesday, we meet once a month, and we hope at that meeting that we'll have more clarity as to what's going to be possible later this spring. And there is another safety committee meeting scheduled, and I've asked the people, there are some other meetings that need to be scheduled as they get scheduled to keep me updated so that I can continue to keep you updated. Chris, anything? Okay, so that's, that's really all I have at that point for that. And then, is it the Freedom of Information request? Is that it? Okay. And then, the last item is the Freedom of Information request. So we had one, and was received requesting retirement information, which was granted. And that's it for me, except for Tweet of the Week, which is Bev.
All right. Tweet of the Week goes to York High School and specifically to Renee Kaharchek, @kaharchekart under her Twitter handle. And it is emphasizing York High School's presence at the IHSAE, or Illinois High School's Student Art Exhibition Reception. And the tweets read, "York High School at IHSA reception at York D205." And the tweets read, "York High School at IHSAA reception, at YorkD205, at ThisIsYork, hashtag igniteD205." And I believe if you're looking at both of the pieces side by side, you certainly see some of the students represented, and then also some of their art on the side. What is most fascinating and not necessarily represented in the tweet is that that particular exhibit for about nine students equates to over $1 million in art scholarship. So congratulations to York Art. Pretty amazing stuff.
I guess I missed my calling.
Next time.
Wow, that's good. Thank you. Okay. Board communications. Board members will present reports or share information with the full board. Does anybody have anything? Karen?
Chris and I attended the Lend meeting on Friday, and I know that it's been a few years since Lend has had a lobby day, but they are planning a lobby day Wednesday, April 3rd. I've, I have represented the board for the last eight years on Lend, and I've typically gone to lobby days with Lend for us, because there's a lot of new, new governor, leadership, and people at the House and Senate. I'm recommending that we do that. I do understand that it's the day after the election, and I'm up for reelection, so I wanted to bring that to your attention from both of those elements.
All right. Thanks. Anybody else?
So I'm going to go back to the concept that I had brought up about the pulling together to, pulling together the community to understand the donation process, and just wanted to get some thoughts, ideas, feedback from the rest of the board, because as I said, I am one board member. Want to get thoughts, feedback from the rest of the board on their, on their reactions to that suggestion.
Karen?
So my reaction is, I think we're on, I'll call it phase two, maybe, of this. I know that we, over the last eight or maybe more years, Jim, that we have heard from the community, we have heard from the PTA councils, the foundation, and I think that, you know, Dave, with you and your leadership, and then us as a board wanting to work collaboratively with our community generosity in all these organizations, that we began to wrap our arms around it, but it seems as though we need to do some next stages, if you will. That's how I see this, because I know that we've looked at the policy before, we've had conversations with people, but it has been a little bit of time since we've orchestrated it holistically, and a lot has, has transpired since then. So for example, since Dave has come on board, shared his vision, you know, gotten, this is what we want to do educationally. The foundation, the last two years has been outstanding in helping us fulfill that educational experience for all of our students at various schools. And so I just wanted to give some example as to, we have made progress. I think that this is another, I'll call it a deep dive. For, from my perspective, I look at it as parity for educational experiences for our students across the district. So it doesn't matter where, what school, what classroom that they're at, that they can have a similar educator, a parity educational experience, no matter where they are. So they can move from one classroom to another in a building, they can move from one building to another if parents move within the neighborhood, or if they're going from, you know, one middle school of the three going into York and all being prepared at parity to have equal opportunities at York. So I'm looking at it from that standpoint as a number one priority. Second is, then we have some other peripheral things that are not so closely aligned with that educational experience or a closer link. Those are the more nuanced items that I think are more difficult for us, and we might find that that's the issue, but that's the clarification that I would like to get from the community, because I think that would go a long way.
I think, I think what I'd like to have before, if we go through this meeting, is some real significant data, some facts. What have been the donations to the individual schools? What have they been for? What categories? What has the district done to equalize those, the impact? And get some, a real good sense of those things? Get information from the community about what they're seeing in terms of impact of donations that might not be apparent to board administration, PTAs. I don't know what other facts, but I think what everybody's, not everybody, but I think what I hear some people saying is they're looking at these donations and seeing a disparity. Let's find out of how much of a disparity there is. And they're projecting that this could result, or it does result, in a disparity in some element of educational resource to different communities. And I think we have to go deeper with that, because I think a lot of people are, are putting expectations or predictions in place, and it'd be really nice to have that information, to have that launch the discussion as to what needs to be addressed, and then the magnitude of the change, if any, what it is.
Margaret, do you have something else, or?
One thing, I was just going to say, I do not have any preconceived notions on what the outcome may be. But whatever the outcome is, I want to be sure the, the community has, has spoken on what they believe it should be, because, again, I think the challenge with these one-off conversations is everyone looks to the other person to say, you come up with the answer. And I don't think that's the way it should work. That's not what we were elected to do. That's not what the principal's role is. That's not what the PTA's role, president's role is. I think as a community, we all need to decide what we want, and whatever that is, as a community, whatever that community decides, then we'll know how we move forward, and whatever process we put in place for what the community says they want, that's how we'll move forward. But I think everyone needs to kind of state where they are and what they want, because I don't think we've heard enough from what everybody wants. We just hear the, on the exceptions.
Anybody else? Shannon?
I think people want, you know, equity, like if we looked at specific examples, like for guided reading, we can show the equity for the guided reading materials. And, you know, maybe for Lincoln, they were down, so then this donation makes sense, you know? So I think, you know, we've, yeah, if we look at data, I think that would help a lot, because I remember looking at guided reading when we're getting a lot of donations for guided reading materials. We had the administration show us the, the facts and figures, and, and there was equity and a lot more for our Title I school. So it's good to show, we could show the data, and when I've looked at the data, there has been equity. So it's just a lot of talking without data sometimes. Also, we talked about the time horizon, like for, for playgrounds. Everyone might not have a playground in the certain year of 2019, but within a five-year period, then there's equity. So there's, sometimes there's a time lapse of, within a certain period, we will get everyone to a certain level. So, I mean, there's just a lot of moving parts with it, and I think a lot of data needs to be shared.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. So we have three upcoming meetings scheduled. Monday, March 11th, 2019, special board of education meeting here at District 205 Center, 7 o'clock. Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, Finance and Operations Committee meeting here at District 205 Center at 6:30. And Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, regularly scheduled board of education meeting here at District 205 Center at 7:30. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.